Granted, no further permits expected to be granted in the next week or two. But I am happy that they're starting to remove some of that equipment and make some progress. Kristin, did you have anything you wanted to add?
On General Walker?
Yes.
Yeah. I think you summed it up pretty well, just to let everybody know that right now we have not authorized, as you know, everything's kind of on a pause, stop work. There is a demolition permit for 101 Francis that, in the time that they've been getting all of the equipment off the site, the other-
It hasn't been granted though, right? The demolition permit?
It's been filed. It will not be granted until we figure out a few other additional items. So, nothing, nothing this week. We'll see about next week.
Okay.
Everything's on pause.
I thought it was sent to, to the whole board.
I'll forward it to everyone.
Perhaps I was mistaken. I thought it was sent to everyone. It came in at four thirty this afternoon, so it hasn't been long.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Motion to continue this matter of the Planning Board meeting of March fifth, twenty twenty.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, five zero.
Motion to take items F, G, H, I, J, and K together in honor of order for discussion purposes.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, five zero. Item seven F is a public hearing, application for approval of special permit pursuant to section twelve point one point five, P D's special permit of the zoning bylaws, twenty North Avenue, Vulcan Forms Incorporated is the applicant. Item seven G is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section one point five point one, light manufacturing or processing plants of the zoning bylaws, twenty North Avenue, Vulcan Forms Incorporated is the applicant. Item seven H is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section one point five point two, laboratories engaged in research, experimental, and testing activities, including but not limited to the fields of biology, chemistry, electronics, engineering, geology, medicine, and physics, subject to the planning board making the findings set forth in section eight point three point seven point four of the zoning bylaws, and subject to the applicable rules and regulations of the board and health, of health, of the zoning bylaws, twenty North Avenue, Vulcan Forms Incorporated is the applicant. Item seven I is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section one point five point four, hazardous and toxic materials, chemical use, storage, transport, disposal, or discharge of the zoning bylaws, twenty North Avenue, Vulcan Forms Incorporated is the applicant. And item seven J is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section one point five point five, generation or storage of hazardous waste, limited to the volumes classified as very small quantity generator in the zoning bylaws, twenty North Avenue, Vulcan Forms is the applicant. And lastly, item seven K is a discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change, twenty North Avenue, Vulcan Forms Incorporated is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I can motion to continue these matters to the Planning Board of-
Any comments on this from the chair?
There has been just some discussion with the Fire Department, the Building Department, and the Board of Health on, these companies are really interesting and new and great, but there's also some interesting new and things we need to know a little bit more about before they move forward. So-
Okay, thank you.
We will see them at our next meeting.
Motion to continue this matter, Planning Board meeting of March fifth, twenty twenty.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, six zero. Next we have citizens' time. If there is anyone that would like to speak on a matter that is not on our agenda, please come forward. Seeing no one, we will move on to announcements.
Sorry, I'm seeing if the gentleman from the SUNU Solar Committee was here to take that out of order.
Oh, I don't think he's here.
That's at the end, your, end of your meeting. Announcements. It's funny how my, well, before I get into announcements, it's not funny, I guess it's completely obvious how much you miss people that helped you prepare for these meetings. And Liz, Jen has been absolutely amazing as always, but Liz is out in, out this week in Florida, so with that, I will continue. She'll be back next week. Announcements, our assistant planner starts on Monday, so Brady Caldwell will be here Monday. Feel free to swing by next week to say hello. He's just getting his feet wet next week and trying to figure out the ins and outs of the office. Also, if you've been around the town clerk's office, they are very, very busily getting ready for early voting. Early voting is in this room. It will start February twenty fourth and between eight and five o'clock, with the exception of Wednesday till seven, between February twenty fourth and February twenty eighth. Anyone can come in. You don't need to absentee, you just, it's just early voting. And then the official election is Tuesday, March third, from seven a.m. to eight p.m. at the Burlington High School. And the last thing is Wednesday, March fourth. The Z B R C will be in the Town Hall Annex Meeting Room B.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, yes?
Yes, just one thing to add. I'd like to extend condolences to the Brown family on the passing of their father. The Browns are quite widely represented in both of our safety departments, both the police and fire. And I just wanted to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any further announcements? No? Okay. We do not have any legal notices or non-approvals, so we'll move on to, or administrative matters. We'll move on to matters of appointment. Item seven A is a public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, twenty-five Blanchard Road. The trustees is the applicant. This is for Mary Cummings. Welcome.
Thank you.
Please come forward and state your names for the record, please.
Thank you.
Helen McDonald, trustees of reservations, Stevens Coolidge portfolio of properties, including Mary Cummings Park.
And I'm Ray Dunnetts, landscape architect, designer on the project.
Okay. Well, we're very excited to hear what you have to tell us and show us tonight.
Excellent. I want to just start out by thanking you for your review of our proposed site plan with Ray Dunnetts. Ray Dunnetts, landscape architects, who will address the site plan in a minute. But I wanted to take this opportunity to thank both the town and the citizens of Burlington for their assistance to help make this restoration a reality. It's been going on for a while. I was, I noted in nineteen, in two thousand sixteen, the Planning Board here was one of the groups that recommended to the city of Boston on our behalf to take over the RFP for this park. And as you know, Boston issued that for the restoration and future management of the park, which the trustees has. And also a thank you for your continued support when we applied for, through the Commonwealth for the park grant, which is going to help us restore this property. We feel that our plans for this park will fulfill Mary Cummings' vision, forever opened as a public pleasure place, she said. And the park will provide an array of outdoor recreation activities for residents, visitors, as well as area business employees in Burlington. The trustees' long-term stewardship will ensure the care and maintenance of this property in perpetuity. The park grant puts us on a short timeline to begin the removal of the extensive invasives in this, on this property, as well as to complete the construction by June one. So it's a very fast-tracked process. I'd like to introduce Ray Dunnetts of our D L A, who will speak to the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if I'm going to be able to speak into the mic, but-
You can pick that up and hold it.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay. So, talking to Kristin, I wanted to give you an overview of everything that we're doing with this proposal. The idea is that we create a welcome, welcoming area for, for visitors with a new gravel parking lot, similar to what's at Burlington Soccer Field down here, and creating an accessible path that will go around Pollinator Meadows and an open picnic lawn, all the way over to the soccer fields. In addition, we've created, we're going to have a nature trail, Science and Nature Trail, that leads to a boardwalk that overlooks the wetland for watching birds and, and getting kids out to nature. So to focus on what we're going to talk about tonight is the, the parking lot along Blanchard Road.
Can I interrupt quickly? Did you guys happen to bring any of the master plan plats? We'll just say, I think they're, they're so well put together, I think it really gives a good image of the direction you guys are going. However, I don't want to distract from your presentation.
No, that's okay.
We can review them in more detail later.
They are, they, they really do-
Thank you.
-give you a good image of what you're looking at here. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You can, I, we can talk about the top ones, you can, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So, this is enlargement of the parking lot that we're proposing. It will, it's designed almost identically to what you have already at the soccer field with gravel parking lot with timber guard rails that prevent people from driving into the park. We're going to have twenty-one standard parking spaces, which are nine by twenty, and two accessible parking spaces. And in those two accessible parking spaces, we're going to have a, an accessible gravel material. It's called a card pack mix. It's the same thing that we're using for the accessible locks that the trustees will maintain. This is a one-way in and a one-way out. It's been sized to adequately, adequately allow buses to drop kids off into the lot. Our intent is to, there's Oracle's entrance is right across Blanchard Road. We're going to center our entrance on, on their curb cut so that, you know, there's no traffic problems there. This will all be green space. I didn't color it in. There'll be trees along the street. We're clearing much of the, the areas to the east and west of the parking lot for better visibility for cars pulling out, and we're using all regulation signage to indicate one-way, one-way in, stop signs, and compliant handicap parking signs. The, because we're using a gravel lot, the spaces will be marked, just like the soccer field with white stripes on the timber, so you know where to, where you pull in. And I believe, I can open up questions if you, if you have them?
Sure. Was there also something about the field that's nearby, or is that not part of this?
I was describing earlier to the chairman, the parking lot and the recreational and picnic and pollinator field with the picnic tables, just to-
I can, I can-
-talk a little bit about that activity as the kind of front door.
Yeah. So, we have created a moan picnic lawn that's right off the parking lot, which is on the accessible route for, for wheelchairs. It'll feature four or five picnic tables with trees for shade. And this, if you look at the sort of elliptical shape, it opens up to the view of the Flyers Field. And the rest of this whole area here will be cleared of all the invasive brush and replaced with pollinator meadows to attract birds and butterflies and, and that kind of thing. So it'd be a very natural site. We will have some shade trees. We're attempting to put in some buffer evergreen planting to screen out views of the water tower and the cell tower that's close by. There, I forgot to mention before, there will be another boardwalk, similar to what's out there right now, but made wide enough to allow wheelchairs to, to cross. It'll have curbing on the side to prevent somebody from riding off the edge. But that one would be, you know, act great, basically.
Okay, thank you. Kristin, did you want to add anything before we turn-
So they have been with conservation for the last, I think, two, three minutes? Conservation has fully approved the work that they're doing out here. There is the entrance to the soccer field that we built a while, two, twelve years ago?
Twelve years ago.
Which was really, I mean, that made such a difference when people kind of said, oh, now I can go to the park, like you couldn't have before. But, you know, now it's like an entrance. So I think that this new entrance and front door and, you know, and just having the trustees have the, you know, the trustees sign is like, yes, of course, come in. So I think we're all really excited about, about that and you guys being here. And what has it been, three years that we've been talking about this? So, you know, good for you guys for raising the money to continue on and, you know, I'm, we were happy to be supportive of the park grant to get this going, so. Overall, our comments, as I mentioned in the meeting preview, their curb cut was slightly offset from Oracle. When you look at curb cuts, you either want to align them or just make them, you know, way off. So we did ask them to do that, I think, in looking, because it looks like you've shifted it down just-
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay. But anyway, you, you said you could, and that would be an issue.
I will, we definitely will.
Other than that, we've been working with them. They have a conservation restriction that they're working with the city of Boston. We've continually kind of just voiced the, want an ability to make sure that we can upgrade the, upgrade the roadways, create pedestrian pass sidewalks. You know, it's all in, are all of our interest to do so, but just make sure that if there's any, you know, next to construction, that the, can, that the conservation is, our conservation restriction just allows us to, you know, do some of that work to really enhance the network, roadwork, net, roadway network around the area. So, other than that, we completely support it. We're glad that it's happening and, you know, if it looks as good as this brochure, that'd be great.
Thank you. Do we have any department comments or not?
No.
There are some comments.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, Jen. Oh, that's horrible. Sorry. And by the time we actually need the computer, hopefully we'll have it.
Probably since I took the chair, Joe.
That's probably what it is. It's rolling by the off. This is big. There's a lot of comments in here.
They're all, I mean, you could read them for sure, but they-
Yeah, I don't think, I, I think Board of Selectmen's no comments there. Inspector of Buildings, let's see. The proposed project will need to comply with the Architectural Access Board Rules and Regulations, and that would be five twenty-one C M R, specifically Article nineteen, titled Recreational Facilities, otherwise the Building Department has no objections. D P W. You guys have the, I'd rather not go through all of these. They're all just standard, you know, D P W.
Most of that stuff, I, I talked to them. The one issue that we're, we're working on is the water, we, we are bringing water onto the site for future-
Yep.
-use. And we have to re-engineer the water meter, how we're going to house the water meter. The drainage stuff, I talked to engineering, it's all gravel, it's pervious, pervious paving, so-
Okay.
Can't get much better than that.
So you have the comments, you've sat down, you're actually been working with engineering on the comments, so I won't bother going through every one of them. Excellent. Police Department, there is no comment. Fire Department is favorable, approval is submitted. Board of Health, favorable, Board of Health has no comments. Conservation is favorable. Conservation Commission issued an order conditions of Burlington Bylaw Permit approving this project at its February thirteenth meeting. So that's it for comments, Department comments.
Thank you. Look, we have the mic, so if you have questions, please.
Sure, just a couple of things. I think it's phenomenal. It really looks like a nice project, and I'm sure it's going to get well-used over there. There are a couple of things that I just had in commentary. I know that we, Kristin had talked to you about lining up Oracle's exit and entrance with that. Wondering if there's, because I, my guess is that Oracle, you know, people in those buildings across the street are going to probably really love to use this area. And I'm wondering if there's going to be a safe walkway to get across this, across the street, so they don't have to drive across and maybe a delineation some sort with a walkway.
That would be up to-
That would be up to the town for a walk.
Well, I'm wondering if there's some way that maybe, maybe it can work Oracle, maybe.
I suggested that, that-
It's just can be painted, right?
What's that?
It could just be painted, right?
Just paint, just something delineated so that it was, you know, because it, it's kind of a, that road is a little bit-
Speedy.
It's, yeah, it's well-used, and it's, and I think people tend to go a little bit fast on that road. I'd just be concerned about people walking across, because I know it's probably, I'm sure they're going to want to, love to use that at lunch hour and after work and probably before work and things like that. So that's one of the comments. The other one, as I was looking at this earlier today, came to mind that there is a grass area that you're having as a little field, it's a little play area, and it's going to be a mowed grass area, right? I wonder if, in the future, at some point, if there could be a possibility of doing like a farmer's market in there. And, you know, there are a lot of businesses down in that area, and that road is, is a lot of traffic during the rush hour that passes right by here. It'd probably be a great place at some point to do a farmer's market.
Part of the design goal for the trustees was to make this also a space where they might be able to put up tents and- events and that kind of thing, so.
Yeah. Any thoughts in the future about, I know we have, it used, they used to, years ago when I was a kid, there were gardens over there, community gardens over there, you know. I also remember cornfields over there. We used to get the cornstalks to make our scarecrows and things, but the, I know that there were community gardens, and that would be a cool thing to have at some point, maybe, you know.
When we were going through the planning process, that came up, and there's a gentleman in town who handles the community gardens, I-
Peter Capone.
Peter Capone, yes.
And he, we did have community gardens in the plan, and he said he can't fill the ones that he's got right now. So he didn't, he didn't want them.
Well, yeah, no, it's hard to get help for people to go there.
And so it, it may come back in the future. That's why we're bringing the water over.
Yeah.
If there's a future need, it's a possibility. I don't think the trustees have the bandwidth to-
I would just comment, the reason probably, and I've, I've used the community garden, and the reason why I hadn't gone back is because it's way in the back of Francis Wyman.
Yep.
So it's, so if there's a community garden closer to the parking lot, I think you'd probably get, Peter would get a lot more takers on that, you know, it's just location. So that's what I'm seeing here is-
I would bet. And I would also bet-
You may want to transfer that over to here versus keeping that one-
I think you may have, and that's exactly right. I think it's a better, except, more accessible place, but it would be pretty cool to be able to have community gardens in and maybe have a farmer's market there and maybe work in conjunction with that. But I think even the, the people at Oracle, that is something I'm sure they would love to be, you know, maybe have their, you know, have them doing-
Have a garden, yeah.
Gardens over there and, you know, I, it just, there's a lot of great possibilities over there, but this is really cool, you know, having this-
Something to consider in the future.
Yeah, I wouldn't, yeah, I, I guess my point is I wouldn't write off the, the comment that you can't fill up the ones he has is the reason why not to have it here. I think to have it here and then, you know, that, I think that's just more of a location issue with, with the current ones we have, it's not in the, the optimal location.
Well, and this, and honestly, I mean, you know, Burlington people, there's a lot of Burlington people work at Oracle as well, but it would be so accessible to those people. They could be go, gardening at, at lunch hour. You know what I mean? Like, I feel like it's just, it would be so accessible to a lot of people in that area that I, I think he'd have a way easier time filling those gardens than he would at the, you know, the other ones over there.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Anyway, that's, that's it, and thank you so much. This is great.
Thank you, Joe. I'm going to head the other way and ask Brenda if she had something she wanted to ask.
No, no, thank you.
No? Okay.
I have a problem being brief, but I could spend a lot of time on this, because I was one of the original friends of Mary Cummings Park. I don't know if you know Cath Moore?
Yes.
And I'm trying to think of the guy from Medford, who was, they, they were going into the city of Boston and fighting tooth and nail from getting Boston to take this over. And they made some very aggressive moves against that park. The treasurer for the city of Boston said that that was their most valuable trust property, and that time they had it valued at thirty million dollars. And they came after us in various different ways, and those people helped to hold, helped to hold it off. But the thing that really kicked it off, and I'll take credit for that, was the city of Woburn rezoned their portion to open space. A little article in a newspaper, and I said, damn, we got them. No, really? And it took me a long while, and some of the people on the board here will tell you, to get that, to get, we did not have an open space designation, so had to do that first. And I was chairman for a while, and we finally got that done. And as soon as we got that done, through some tough opposition, town meeting voted like ninety-four to six to rezonate to open space, and it was all over.
Who says it took a long time? He was a Boy Scout when he started.
Just about, but you can enjoy with me my sense of comfort and joy to see what this is going to be like. And I, I knew once we got it rezoned, it had no value to the city of Boston. So it was just a case of how far it's going to go. And I'm particularly, people, I, pleased that you people are, are there and involved because of your reputation.
Well, we also would like to say that we're very thankful for the perseverance of the Friends of Mary Cummings Park, so we have a park to restore today.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nothing to add except very exciting. Anything, anything we can do to improve this wonderful asset the town has is awesome for the residents and everybody. So best of luck. Looks great, and can't wait to go check it out when it's all done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just to comment that one of the areas that's not being improved, which I always think was an area that is ripe for improvement, is, is that soccer field parking lot. And there are, if you look on page, I think that's twenty-one of the master plan, if that's the soccer field parking lot, is it?
Keep all our copies away.
Yeah, I mean, it's very, it's, it's, yeah.
That's it.
Yeah. It's very barren over there, and if you, if you look at that, that's kind of your, it's kind of your grand entrance as you come off of South Bedford Street. I'll get you a second there to get twenty-one. The bottom photograph on the bottom. So that's kind of, that's kind of, it should be like a aha moment. And when you go in there, it's kind of, for me, it would be kind of, huh, right? And you've got the soccer field, which it, it could be a soccer field, there's no soccer nets really that I've seen a lot of times, it's just, just that ring, ring path around there. And you've got a couple of trees there, but it, to me, to say kind of, Mary Cummings Park, I'd, I'd be looking for a little more, is there a way to soften up or kind of give that, that entrance more of a, more, more grand, grander? And I mean that from a, a green landscaping standpoint, natural and green-
The new entrance or the existing?
The old, the existing entrance.
That's the town of Burlington.
Yeah, we're not, it's not-
That's us?
Yeah.
Okay. It's on us. Talking to myself, then. Do that off.
Now, that's through our agreement with the city of Boston.
Okay.
That they allowed us to do that.
Maybe we can, we can do something in the future to that, because that's just, you know, to, to help that out, you had to build that up a bit. The only other comment I had is you, you are looking for the, the central field restoration, and that backs up to the, to the new building in Northeastern. It looks like there's a trail that goes right into the, the Northeastern campus. Can you describe a little bit of what that trail's going to be and where does that go? Is it a fence? Is it a gate? Is it accessible for people to come in and out?
Currently, that is only in the master plan. It's not going to be part of this project. We just don't have enough funding. I think, I guess. Jeremy Dick from the trustees.
I was like, I think I've walked it with you.
So what's happened recently, that, that trail, that, that little piece that goes right into the corner fence, that's effectively gone. Northeastern took the gate off the fence and put a solid fence panel in it, so you can't walk through that point. However, down by the Barracks Building, if you're familiar with that, on the left as you come in the driveway, there is now a new pedestrian gate into the park, and you can go through that gate and then walk along the fence to that same point and get into the field as usual. Eventually, we'll get to cutting a proper trail through the vegetation, so you don't have to kind of do this along the fence the whole way.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's a future project.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The other thing that Northeastern did is put in a, a vehicle gate behind that Barracks Building as well, to provide access potentially for the city of Woburn to get over to the watchtower.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ernie?
Yeah, just two, two short questions. First, I noticed you said you're bringing a one-inch water main in. Does that mean, will there be bathroom facilities on one of the parks? There is nothing-
It's just for water.
Irrigation, okay. And the second, I happened to catch the Board of Selectmen's meeting the other night, and I noticed that there was somebody there from, what do they call it now? from, what do they call it now? It used to be Burlington Community Life Center and now it's, uh, Children and Family, is that what it is?
Youth and Family Services.
Children and Family Services. And, and forever since I've been in town, and that's way back in seventy-four, they've been running a, a, what they call a dirt bike program on, on the Mary Cummings property. I'm not sure whether it was just run or was actually permission from the city of Boston.
Ernie, I think that was through recreation.
It was through rec, yeah, but it was.
But I, I think it got discontinued.
No, it's still, it's still going. I actually talked to somebody about it.
I thought that they discontinued.
And it's a challenge program where they take kids, uh, between, I think it's ten and fifteen and they give them a certain goal and if they reach the goal, then they're rewarded by using, getting to use the dirt bikes. And I noticed that it was gonna be discontinued or, go ahead, maybe you can elaborate on that further, please.
I think they'll be able to do that maybe for one more year, but once the conservation restriction is in place, they will not be allowed to do that.
Conservation restriction, okay, understand. Thank you. I'm all set and thank you very much for coming forward to be, uh, quasi-trustees, I guess, of the property. Is that, is that how you'd phrase it? I, I don't know. The city of Boston has, has said you are going to be the trustee of the trust now or?
Um, the city of Boston owns the property and, um, eventually, when all the legal work is done, we will have a long-term management contract of the property.
Management contract, okay.
So, they're, that's with lawyers at the present time.
Thank you very much and thank all the people who fought in the past to keep this the way it is.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Can I make two quick comments? Just one, I had suggested that you people get in touch with Oracle since they're across the street for a possible contribution and maybe part of that could be that they would put a nice walkway for their people 'cause I saw that immediately as something that would be of value to them and to their property and so forth. So, I don't know if you've done that, but I'd go ask them for money really, you know? No, they should be willing to contribute.
Probably.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, um, just a couple of comment, I'm sorry?
That, uh, Millipore has donated that.
I saw that on the plan.
Very nice. Great.
That's okay. Um, I have the same concern that I do think we need to have a crosswalk there and I was gonna ask staff if that's, um, something that we should reach out to Oracle about or if this is something the town can do. I do think it's important that we have that marked for safety. It's just painting.
No, no, I, my quick answer was, yes, I think the town can do it. I was just trying to figure out, um.
Well, we can take that offline, what we need to do to get that done, but let's just.
If we can line it up, which you can.
You said, they said they'll line it up. If you line it up, we can find, get it painted.
I think we can more easily get the crosswalk done 'cause there is a full sidewalk on the other side, if you recall, that Oracle built.
And, and I did want to just briefly mention, I know that sidewalks are not a part of this project, but it is our goal to eventually have sidewalks all the way down that road. But in addition, I also wanted to mention, there's also a, another small parking lot over by Holly Glen and eventually, I'd like to see a, a wa, a sidewalk there. It's actually not a long distance from that parking lot to the entrance that's nearby, but right now, people are walking in the roadway or on the grass in order to get from that parking lot to the entrance and so that's not ideal. It's, not that I think it's part of this, but sort of something to keep on the list. So, again, I, I was in the office earlier and had the opportunity to look over this master plan previously and it, it does look wonderful and I'm very excited about it and very thankful that you're involved in working on this. I wanted to see if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter. I see, I know John Sacks is here, who is very involved with the Friends and, oh, and hello also, is, would you like to speak?
Yes.
Please feel free to come forward. Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Jim Edgerly. I live, uh, in Holly Glen, uh, as you just referred to it. And, um, I guess I'd like, after the comment you just made, I'd like to highlight the need. It's kind of urgent need for sidewalks in this area. There's the reserve of Seven Springs on one side and there's Holly Glen on the other side and you can also get, also the people in, uh, Seven Springs can come through that in, to that same area and there's not a single sidewalk in that area and there's very, very busy roads. And we have this beautiful area, uh, Mary Cummings Park, which I go, walk through all the time. I'm so happy to be near it and I am so grateful for the efforts that's being made. But the lack of sidewalks just is kind of at odds with all of this and it really, uh, limits the people who, who live around there to, to get out of where they live because you just can't safely walk on those roads anymore. I think when those roads were built, they had no concept that there'd be such dense, uh, 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 commercial development and residential development in the area, but I think to really utilize Mary Cummings Park, who has potential for the residents and the people who work there and live there to, to get access to it, there needs to be some sidewalks or even just trails inside the park right along Blanchard Road. You know, trails that would follow the roadway would be, would make a big difference 'cause right now, you literally have to walk on the side of a very busy street where cars are going.
Very fast.
Forty miles an hour at least, yeah.
Yes, I agree with you.
That's, uh, that's gonna be, it's easier said than done down that area and I'll tell you why, because years ago, that was, that was a, um, a county road. And if you look at how the road, I've had occasion over the years when I was on the Board of Selectment to see this, but if you actually look where the pavement is, it's nowhere, and there's a lot of locations, it's nowhere near the road layout. So, it's gonna, it's gonna be really tricky to get a sidewalk in that area because it's, you have to determine where the road layout is and if you can fit a sidewalk in that area, I don't know if they're gonna have to move some of the road and that, it's, it's.
So, it's been a, um, a, you know, one by one, all the way from Little Sex Turnpike and down Muller Road, trying to get easements where we need easements and agreement and, and just, it's a point I made with, um, the conservation easement, whether it's a sidewalk along the road, if it's path in the park, there's, we need to create a, a pedestrian network.
Right.
Formal or informal, whatever we can in the area and, but we need, because of the layout, we need help from the partners along the edges.
Well, and I think the partners are key because it, you really would be, I'll be honest with you, with a road like that, you really should have the, if you can somehow move the walkway away from the road, because the road is a dangerous road to begin with. Even putting a, even putting a, 'cause it's narrow and it's windy and dark and, you know, i- if you could manage to put the walkways away from the roadway, you'd be better off anyways.
I think you're right. Phil, thank you. Um, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Seven zero.
Onward, Ernie.
Okay. Motion, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of the trustees.
Applicant.
Applicant for approval of a site plan application for properly located at twenty-five Blanchard Road, Mary Cummings Park, to permit improvements to the park, including the creation of a new parking area, visitor entrance, signs, benches, picnic tables, trails, tree clearing and native landscaping as reflected in our site plan enti- entitled, Mary Cummings Park Improvements Prepared by Ray Du- Dunes? Thank you. Landscape Architects Incorporated, dated January twenty-second, twenty twenty, the site plan consisting of twenty-three sheets, subject to the following revisions, terms and conditions as printed?
As amended.
And amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven zero. We're very excited. When do you expect this work to be completed?
June first?
Oh, that's right, you said June first. I, I forgot that you said that.
But we'll be extending a formal opening, uh, announcement for probably October one for a grand opening. We thought we'd give everything a little bit of summertime to grow and it's just an opening in the fall.
That's great, that's great. The October timeframe would be nice because then we can announce it also at, at September town meeting and that would be really nice. Okay? Thank you.
Come to us anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on.
Motion to take items, motion to take item seventy, seven C, seven D and seven E together for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven zero. Item seven B is a continued public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article Two, definitions and Article Four, use regulations to address and define uses pertaining to parking structures submitted by Escadrill Realty LLC. Item seven C is a continued public hearing petition to amend zoning bylaw, Article Five, dimensional regulation schedule as it pertains to parking structures submitted by Escadrill Realty LLC. Item seven D is a continued public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article Seven, parking structures to modify the requirements for parking garages submitted by Escadrill Realty LLC. And item seven E is a continued public hearing petition to rezone property to the general bus, bus, excuse me, general business BG District, one to three, Ray Avenue. Ray Avenue Trust is the applicant. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair. I was looking at the applicant, also Michael Knowley. I would like to call, uh, for you back in, maybe either November, early December. We initially filed these, um, proposed amendments for the January town meeting. Some of the questions and discussions, we decided it was probably more proof to wait till May and so we're, uh, circling back to you right now. Have had some meetings with the bylaw review committee. We have a subcommittee set up with, with our board that we've met with once, so that wants, we hope to be doing that again. And we met with staff yesterday, um, so tonight, we were hoping maybe we could just address and, and get some feedback from the board on the issues of, uh, we've identified potential areas in town where, where this to be approved might be eligible for, for the parking structure that we're talking about. Mike's done an analysis on that. There were some other issues that we've been talking about in addition to those, things like added green space and things of that nature that I think we need some more fleshing out. We're hoping to sit down with the subcommittee over the next week or two to get into that a little bit deeper. We'll actually get back to you as well. But we thought tonight might be a good chance to at least get some initial feedback in, on the, I guess, the other areas in town that might be eligible for this type of a structure where this proposal passed. So, uh, with the chair's permission, I'd like Mike to kind of walk you through that. He has a better handle on it certainly than I do.
Okay, um, when you say walk us through, you mean through all of the properties or did you mean something else?
Yeah, that was if.
'Cause I want to hold off on that for a few minutes. We can do it, but I don't want to start off with that if we could.
Sure, however you wanna.
Can I just first ask staff if they wanted to just give us a quick update on where we stand?
Sure. So, these four articles were submitted for January continued, um, to May. The articles are, um, the definitions for, for, um, structured parking, the, um, some Article Five dimensional criteria. Obviously, the, in the use table as to allow for structured parking in the BG District, or, I'm sorry, allow for the parking deck option, which is the single level in the BG District. But identify those in the, um, identify the other, the other uses. As well as have an amendment to Article Seven. So, we met yesterday, we talked about, um, Article Seven, um, some of the setbacks and green spaces and some other things. We want to flush that out a little bit more, but what, um, and what I felt like, that we really haven't had a good discussion yet and, you know, from kind of the discussions I have had, it seemed like a good opportunity to have the discussion with this board overall. It seemed like there was some favorability toward the, the proposal that's being offered, but really to understand the impact of a change to the parking deck in the BG zone and based on the propos, proposals and setbacks and some other criteria, what does that look like? And what does that look like for a number of sites? And kind of walk through and understand that aspect of it and kind of get comfortable or, I mean, not get comfortable, raise questions, um, from the board as to what are some of the issues surrounding that so we can, um, begin to kind of process that information as we continue to work out the details of some of the other aspects that, um, that are part of this proposal. Um, and kind of another sidebar, the, um, zoning bylaw review committee wanted to take over the definitions and feel that it's important to bring it forward. We have structured parking. In the bylaw right now, we have no definition. They felt that was something that needed to be addressed. So, what you will see is they have submitted, um, very similar, slightly modified definitions that will be submitted under the zoning bylaw review, um, body themselves. Those are officially open with you at the second meeting of March. But this will stay kind of on until that opens. So, um, and then, as mentioned, that we would like, um, Ernie and Barbara as a subcommittee and anyone else who's interested to sit down, um, before our next meeting, just to kind of flush out some of the other dimensional criteria, um, Article Seven parking criteria and some of this green space conversation a little bit more, um, before our next meeting, so.
Thank you.
So, we're focusing on just kind of BG, um, the parking deck use, kind of how that looks in town.
So, before we jump in, I wanted to sort of take the temperature of the board a little bit on something because I don't know what the rest of the board is thinking on this. I know what I'm thinking and I want to just sort of take the temperature. How many sites does this involve if this were to pass? Is it eighteen?
It's, it's been down to eighteen since the last time.
Eighteen, okay.
We came in front of the full board.
Eighteen, okay.
Yeah, I just, just to explain why it went to eighteen, because before it was about forty-three.
Right, you.
We, we changed the buffer requirement to not just say that the parking structure itself couldn't be within two hundred feet, but the lot that it is on cannot be within two hundred feet of a residential zone. That's how we've gotten down to that number.
Right, which, which I appreciate. What I want to ask my fellow board members is to weigh in on the following. What, what I'm look, I look at this and I see the need. I see a business that's been in Burlington for a long time, that's, um, beloved by many people who live here. I go there for my birthday every year. And yes, you have a parking problem 'cause my husband had to park at Total Wine and, and come and get me. And I want to find a way to make this work for you. My concern is not this property, it's the, the dominant effect on all the other properties. And I would like to see if there's some creative way that we can resolve this on your site without involving all those other properties. And I want to find out if my fellow board members share my concern about those other eighteen properties because if it's only me, then let's, then let's go through and talk about every single one of them. But if we all kind of, if anyone else shares my concern or if majority of them share my feelings on this, I don't know if it's productive for us to look at each individual site and, and how that would impact. So, I guess I'm, I'm sort of turning that over to my board members to see, um, where everyone is on that. Who wants to jump in first?
I'll jump. Uh, I think, I, I think it would be worthwhile to see which eighteen properties are going to be affected. And, and that would at least help me make up my mind more as to whether we should try and narrowly focus it, as you're, as you're saying, uh, just the applicant in front of us or whether there's a problem with, with it happening on.
Right, so perhaps we should list them at least.
Yeah.
I understand that. Anyone else want to weigh in before we? Okay.
No, I just want to ask about the subcommittee. Who's on it, please?
Uh, right now, Barbara and I, right now.
Okay, 'cause I, I, I'm not really up to speed on this and I want to go to the subcommittee meetings and, you know, get a better handle on what's going on. And so, if Liz would give me a call. Liz, hello.
That's Janet.
Yeah, I'm up to speed. But, uh, just give, just give me a call as to one of the subcommittee meetings if you would.
Of course, always.
Okay.
Actually, I'd like to know that too, if we could just send that around.
Yes, I think everyone's very interested.
We will send it around and we'll make a personal phone call.
Was it, were there minutes from the last subcommittee meeting?
Uh, the last subcommittee meeting was combined with the zoning bylaw review. They have minutes.
They would be in their minutes.
And when I see them, I will forward them.
Thank you.
So, why don't we try and just, if you could, list or you can, and you can quickly show the properties and, and help us locate them in our minds
as Ernie requested.
Hold on, let me, uh, we have them, um, up on the screen. Make it over. Uh, don't worry about reading what it's, I mean, uh, but, Mike, you want to start?
Yeah, so.
Uh, hold on, let's go to the top. So, and then just say next when you're done describing.
Yes.
Scroll down for it.
So, this first shows the Escadrill and the lot in purple is one through Ray Avenue, considering that one parcel. And then twenty-eight Cambridge Street, which is the cycle loft, that's another parcel that would meet the criteria of being outside of the buffer area. And then to the next page, these four properties are right across the street from Cafe Escadrill. And then to the next page, these four properties are right across the street from Cafe Escudal. Couple of little strip malls there, there's a few different buildings. Um, so those will be outside the buffer zone as well. So all these properties, uh, would be allowed just based on where they are according to the buffer. Um, and then the next page, so that's, uh, thirty-six Cambridge Street, so it's, um, that's the bank, I want to call it Stone Savings, but I have a feeling they changed their name. That's next to Crossroads Plaza. Uh, and then the next slide is, should be Wall Street. So these three properties, two, ten, and twenty Wall Street, so where Paparazzi's used to be. Um, and then the plaza where the Dunkin' Donuts and Chuck E. Cheese used to be, and then I think it's the medical center at twenty Wall Street. And then the next slide, that's Wayside Commons. That would be outside the buffer area. And the next slide, um, was over to the Middlesex Turnpike. So to get an idea for where we are, the, the fifty-one to fifty-three Cambridge Street, the largest parcel shown there in red is the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond site. Um, and then the forty-seven, the smaller one there is, there's a small little plaza there, I'm not sure what stores there and-
That's where the real school is? That's across the street.
Oh.
That's across the street. That's the new, it's a new restaurant.
It's the old Subway.
Oh, that's right.
You know what I'm talking about, they were, okay, thank you.
So the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond is the same-
Yes.
That's Trader Joe's.
That's Trader Joe's, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's the bigger parcel there.
Right, okay.
Yeah, and then fifty-four is what?
I think there's like, there's a FedEx there, it used to be a FedEx there.
Used to be Kinko's?
Kinko, yeah.
It's probably been gone for, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's fifty-six, right?
It's on the other side, right, right, right.
Um, and then I think, uh, oh no, and then, yeah, the, the biggest one, the mall. So that's all the mall parcels, again, I'm, I'm taking that as one parcel because it's designed that way. And then the last one would be, uh, actually, I think it's ninety to one oh eight, but it's the, the Barnes and Noble and Yard House lot there. So I think, I think that's all of the parcels that would be outside of the area.
Information question, if I could, Madam Chair?
Yes.
It, it, but there's also another restriction, isn't there, uh, FAR restriction?
Uh, it's a building to ground area ratio because BG doesn't have a floor area ratio, uh, restriction. So it's the, yeah, the restriction would be to the existing, um, requirement in the BG is to have a thirty-three percent building to ground area ratio. So we propose that if you were to include a structured parking on the lot, that it would reduce it to twenty-five percent so that it wouldn't just be a situation where, all right, well, we're adding parking, so now we can have more building too. So you're actually reducing what you could have as far as footprint.
And would-
Sorry, go ahead.
Would all these parcels be capable of doing that? They're less than twenty-five now, is that what you're saying?
No, no, some of them would be further restricted by that. These are, these are to just show-
Just the buffer.
Just the buffer that restricts them. There's, and numbers are on here, so we could go back up and I could tell you which ones currently are already over twenty-five percent.
Yeah, but we have to, that can change.
That could change, that's why I showed, that's why I showed the mall.
Yeah, you're better off showing the way you did.
Yeah, I didn't want, I didn't want to say that it couldn't happen.
Because redevelopment could occur.
Yeah, it could, it could be knocked down and done over, so.
Okay.
Uh, uh, I see what you're trying to say.
Of course. So that being said, when you say certain ones that you're lumping together, like you're putting to mall or, you know, so the Escudal, is that, is that to say because they're three separate or several separate parcels, you could put a parking structure in each one or only one on the parent parcels, for lack of better terms?
Good question.
Excellent question.
Well-
Because I think that would make a, that would, that would change my opinion on, say, this versus, you know, or, or the Escudal, which if you could also expand the facility inside, that would be great too. Finding a seat in the Escudal's got us, throwing that out there.
Yeah, um, well, for, speaking for the Escudal, we would need to combine that other lot with our lot to, to have all these criteria be met and to make sense.
And do we know if all of the criteria would be met on each one of these parcels or would they need the entire, you know, again, calling it more of a parent parcel with all, all of the lots or?
For the mall, you mean?
Yeah.
I, the way I looked at the mall, um, was as one parcel because that's how the site plan takes it, the, the current site plan that it shows and that's, you know, when they talk about what their building to ground area ratio is, what their parking ratios are for site. So just, I-
I think we might have to ask Town Council that question.
Yeah, I, I, I think that that's-
You have a question? I'm, I'm, I just, I heard the end of it. Would the criteria, would this, if we took, so we're looking at ninety-eight to one oh eight, would we be looking at potentially, say, ten parking structures? Does each one of these lots or three? Or do we need the entire, and again, for lack of better terms, parent parcel, all of these combined to meet the criteria for one parking structure? Because that would be my concern is that, you know, we're saying, and, and granted, yes, we know the mall is, is what it is today and that's how that, that property is being utilized. Fifteen years from now, the mall could say, hey, you know what? We're, uh, we're just not going to the mall anymore and now we're going to make it whatever. And, you know, we obviously want to look at the, you know, at the future, uh, use of these spaces.
Um, there isn't anything in here at this point that they, needs to be aggregated into a parking structure. I mean, if you wanted to build five, you could build five. I mean, it, the mall itself though, in terms of the way zoning works on the mall, um, which is a little bit unique to, um, other areas, but the mall is for zoning purposes, um, calculated as one. So those, all of those parcels are one for zoning purposes. So, you know, if it's twenty-five percent, I think it's twenty-two percent, so twenty, so you can go up to twenty-five percent under the current proposal, whether that's one structure, a couple structures.
Well, is that, is that, is that simply because it's-
There isn't anything that controls it.
Is that because it's one site?
It's because it's one combined and unified site.
Right, but, but that can change as well, I'm sure.
It could, oh, of course, yeah.
Right.
So-
I mean, all of it, I'm just saying, the mall in itself right now, as we calculate it, um, you know, so, so, um, there isn't anything that would control that other than, you know, market forces are going to build a whole bunch of small garages, but who knows?
Sure.
Yeah, but I think that that's something, you know, what the subcommittee might want to take into consideration. And that's where, that's where I'm, what I'm running up against. I feel like we're opening Pandora, Pandora's box here. This is eighteen sites, each of which is unique and could be changed in the future. It's, it's very difficult to anticipate what the effects of these changes could be on all eighteen sites. I would prefer to find a way to legally resolve your problem and allow you to do what you need to do on your site without involving the other seventeen sites. Now, I'm not saying that's easy. Um, I don't know how far you've gone down that road to see if there's another way to do it.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes.
A, a question as, as we, as we talk about this and going back in history a little bit. When you did the addition on the Escudal for the function room, did you have that property next to it that, that, that was a satellite parking or was that acquired before or after or would you have that all the time there?
Uh, the property that's the, the extra parking lot now, it, at the time that we got the banquet facility approved, it was, there was a building there.
Yeah, okay.
And as the construction was going on, as we finished the renovation, uh, the tenant actually moved out and we decided to knock that building down for additional parking, but it wasn't part of the original proposal.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
But it was before we really went live.
Yeah, yeah.
If that answers the question.
It does, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So I'm not sure I really am getting a feel for what the board's temperature is on this.
Well, I, I, I kind of asked that question because I'm saying, you know, that's how that evolved over time and now you're adding, you know, the cycle loft building to that property and then you're saying, so you need extra parking for that. And so I just wondered how that evolved, uh, previously because I didn't remember that there's a parking lot there before you did the, uh, the addition, thinking back when we, we used to go to the, the ice cream back in the day. Um, so now I'm trying to think of down, the next building down, what, what's housed there, is that, that's not great. What's, uh, what's that next building down?
Next building down is, um, it's a, they're a scale manufacturer.
Okay.
Work with scales, I don't know exactly what they do.
I thought that was, yeah, it's like a photo property in place, isn't it?
Uh, that, the next-
Next one down, so, you know, as we kind of, think of how that evolved initially, maybe, you know, you can kind of maybe put feels out there to say how, how they're doing where they're in their business and maybe that's an opportunity, you know, long term.
Madam Chair, to get, to answer your question, yeah, if there's a way to solve their problem without involving all eighteen sites, that would be great. I think we all want to see, you know, the Escudal's beloved in this town and Escudal does a lot of things for a lot of, uh, you know, organizations in this town. So if there's a way to do it, I just don't know how to do it.
Neither do I.
Um, and if we could find a way to get them in parking and not have to worry about if malls die and five parking garages pop up, that would be ideal, but I don't know how to get there without.
I, I don't either. I think what I'm asking is for the subcommittee, should our focus be on trying to resolve this problem on this single site? Or should our focus be, do we want to make this change that affects all eighteen sites and look at all eighteen sites? And that's kind of the question I'm asking of the board.
I'll answer it.
I, I would like to hear all your answers.
You can see I'm easily confused. No, I, to try to envision, you know, on all these other sites, what it implies is too much for my brain at this stage of my life. I would, I would feel much more comfortable dealing with the Escudal.
Okay. Brenda, did you want to, uh, did you, did you?
Uh, yeah, no, I mean, I, my thoughts are the same way and I feel like it's a big, that's a huge undertaking and a lot of thought process and it's a lot, eve- even at this stage of my life. But I would rather, I mean, clearly they, they, there's a need for parking here and I think that that, you know, the fact that they acquired the lot, cycle loft, I think is even more reason, uh, that building, it, it, you need a, that problem needs to be fixed. It's, it probably should have never been built like that, but now it's a problem and it needs to be fixed. And I think this would be a way to address all those parking concerns. So I, I want to see if, I would love to see if there's a way we can just address it with this site and start incorporating all of the rest of the town into it as well. Like, may I share that thought, that concern?
I, I guess I'm kind of fighting two sides in my head, you know, I, I definitely agree, you know, Escudal definitely needs the parking. Um, I don't want to see a, a lot of parking garages all, you know, scattered amongst Burlington, but if the mall needed one, you know, which I think that they could, especially if we're, you know, we're adding all these outdoor, you know, opportunities, um, is there a way that we can, I don't know, I guess, pinpoint these eighteen properties and if each one of these properties needs something, they need to, you know, we give them consent, I guess it's, I, I, I don't know exactly what that looks like, you know, um.
I, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm sure, would the mall like to have the ability to build parking rushes? I bet they would.
They would too.
Um, but I, I just feel like I don't want to open that door before, they haven't even asked for it yet and, and there's-
They're listening.
Right, they're listening, but, um, I'm just, I feel like it's a, I just, it's hard, a lot to wrap your mind around and how each site will be impacted is very difficult to anticipate. We don't know what people will do with them in the future.
Can you, uh, uh, maybe, uh, we're only talking in the BG zone, we're only talking about parking decks, not parking garages, am I correct?
In this conversation right now, we're just talking about parking-
According to the proposed-
Decks, yes. A one-story parking deck, not structured parking.
Not parking garages, right?
I understand that.
And I do notice it's, it says by special permit. Is there any way, to your point, to tailor the special criteria, special permit criteria? Can you have special, special permit criteria? In other words, just-
Ernie, you're confusing me.
You can have, you can have parking structure special criteria.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, that's Article seven.
So is there any way to, I mean, maybe, maybe that's even too, too broad.
I don't know, I mean, it's certainly something to think about.
I'm just throwing them out.
I also, I mean, experience tells us that even when it's a special permit, anytime we say no, we get sued. That's what happens when we say no.
Sometimes, yeah.
Since I've been here, it pretty much happens.
I, I think you're probably right.
When we get, we say no, we get sued and we don't want to get sued and we don't want to drive up the town's legal costs. I just feel like even if we have to jump through some hoops, if there's some way we can do this for the Escudal site without involving all these other sites, it just seems like that makes more sense to me.
I would agree.
So maybe that can be our focus? Yes, Tom?
Um, I think we'd be fine with that if there is such a solution. Um, I would just like to point out, I, we're talking eighteen, um, potential, uh, locations. I think, uh, some of them, from a practical standpoint, are eliminated. I mean, using the, the bank there that's next to, you know, if you, if you put up a parking structure, there's no room to put a building on it.
Right.
So, I mean, obviously the mall, Wayside Commons, some of those larger areas would be in play and those are legitimate concerns and I, I, we certainly appreciate that. But I don't think we're going to be seeing eighteen of them around town.
I hope not.
Just looking at this list of, this list, you know, the smaller lots just wouldn't be able to house a building and a, you know, parking.
But you never know what might happen in the future with combining lots and cha- tearing buildings down and building something completely different that we don't imagine right now.
But even if there were a couple of them adjacent, they combined one, it's not going to be eighteen, there might be five.
Yeah.
But could you put, uh, s- parking structure with the building above it?
No.
Like, or parking underneath it?
Is that a deck or?
Yeah, that's not considered a deck.
That wouldn't fall into the definitions of-
Integrated our structure.
Okay, all right, I just, so anyway, I think what I'm hearing from the board is, let's try-
Sure.
-to work it out without involving the other sites and see how far we get.
And that's fine, and that, I mean, frankly, that's why we kicked it over till May so we could have these types of discussions, because we understood that there were some issues out there.
Okay.
If, uh, we consider a subcommittee meeting up, we can all put our heads together and maybe-
Let's do that.
Maybe come up with something.
Let's do it for next week and get started. Can we do that?
Uh, what will we find out? I was just wondering how many, did they have a projection of how many spots they need now and to take them into the future with the Escudal?
But looking at the parking deck would add approximately thirty-four parking spaces and that would put us, I think it puts us like two spots over our maximum parking ratios for the site itself. Our parking ratio is kind of, it's more complicated than a, because we have the other parking, the other lots on Ray Ave that we accommodate, like their extra parking accommodates us and it's part of our parking block when we include our numbers. So if you take everything together, which is how we've done it in the past, it, I think it's two or three parking over the maximum, so it's-
Well, why don't you start with the max you're going to need and then we'll negotiate, negotiate you down to what, what you're going to get.
Yeah, well, that's the max we would be able to attain at any level.
I could see it set back on that lot, not necessarily on Cambridge Street, right on Cambridge Street. And I think it would be much less-
It's on Ray Ave.
It would be over, the overflow parking.
Or are you talking about cycle lot?
Yeah, on, no, on that part of the lot, you know, I could see a, I, I could see a structured parking garage because, you know, it wouldn't have to be enormous.
They're talking about putting it on the, the piece of property on Ray Ave that's behind the Escudal site. So it's, you wouldn't see it from Cambridge Street, I don't think, not much.
Not, not really, you'd see like, you'd see the cars that are parked, you'd see it, but it would almost look like a continuation of the parking lot that we have now.
It wouldn't be out front on Cambridge Street.
Well, unless they're gonna have, uh, you know, uh, little cars running around to take you from halfway down Ray Avenue. Well, whether you like it or not, there's a lot more senior citizens.
Do have that.
We do have LA.
So I think we have our marching orders, and, um, let's set up a meeting.
Absolutely.
Get started. Okay, thank you.
If we can do it for us too, that would make it simpler for me, for sure.
Certainly would, yeah.
So, um, but I don't know what that would look like, but if we can come up with something, that would be fine.
We might have to twist ourselves into pretzels, but let's give it a shot.
All right.
I would, I would like to applaud, um, Michael Murray's, um, efforts to do the amount, this much analysis. Um, you know, we get a lot of applicants that are like, I want to do this. And so, okay, well, we need data, and we need analysis, and we need to figure out what this means for everything else. And, um, it, you know, without really doing much of anything other than saying just that, he brought in all this stuff. So I, I just want to thank you for-
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
So, um, you can contact the planning office tomorrow, and we'll set it up. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Okay, so I think I need a motion.
Would you like to make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of March fifth, twenty twenty?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven, zero. Okay. Um, next, uh, let's see.
Motion to take items seven L and seven M together and out of order for discussion purposes?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven, zero. Item seven L is a continued public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section four point three point two point six, outdoor storage of supplies and equipment incidental to permitted uses, subject to requirements for location, lighting, training, fencing, cover, and safety precautions of the zoning bylaws. Three seventy-six Cambridge Street, The Granite Place is the applicant. And item seven M is a continued discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change. Three seventy-six Cambridge Street, The Granite Place Inc. is the applicant. So we've been waiting for a long time to resolve this, but I, I was told that we've made tremendous project pro- progress, and I'm looking forward to hearing more.
And I have brand-new granite in my kitchen door.
If you get this done, you can get in your kitchen, your garage, and everywhere else.
Granite house.
Years ago, I got in trouble when I gave another planning board, um, Valentine's candy. On Valentine's Day at a hearing, and they returned it to me a month later with a very nasty note. So I've been very careful not to get into those kinds of issues.
Did you save it? I mean, we'll take it.
The people, the office loved it, you know, so, but anyway.
What's the note? Take your candy and give us the granite?
Was it anybody that's on this current board?
No, no, it was another city in town, uh, a little bit west of here, so.
I like strawberry creams.
Keep that in mind. Good evening, my name is Frank DePietro, for the record with the BSC Group. I'm here representing The Granite Place. Uh, it has been a, a long time. There's been a lot of stuff going back and forth, and I think, um, first, we want to, uh, on behalf of my client and myself, uh, thank the board for its patience, and certainly thank the staff for their assistance in sort of guiding us along here. Um, it's very interesting when your folks you're working with as clients have no idea of any kind of regulations of zoning, and it happens more often than not. Kristen and I were talking about that. So, um, where we're at is, um, just to remind folks, since it's been a while, uh, The Granite Place is located at three seventy-six Cambridge Street, um, Van Norton Drive here, sixty-two, and that signal's right over in this location. Um, this used to be Lester's, it's now, uh, this used, yeah, this, there here, there's another three seventy-six, that used to be Lester's, it's now a Bug Place. There in this building here, the cleaners is over here. Um, their background is, it's a granite showroom in manufacturing. They have fabrication on the building. The building's divided into three, um, areas of, sort of the, this portion of the site is where the ware, uh, the showroom is. This is where the fabrication is, and this used to be Mother Thrift. They're gonna be taking over the entire building. At this point in time, the interesting news is, they've got a facility in Wilmington that is currently being, um, upgraded and fitted up for them. Uh, they've also discovered that there are regulations in zoning, things they have to comply with, in Wilmington as well.
No.
So they were looking to try to be able to move their facility, uh, the fabrication facility, out by April. That may not happen. They're working as, as much as they can. Right now, the fabrication has been limited to what they had before. Uh, there's no expansion like they talked about. They are slowly moving out, um, the outside parking area, as you well know, has been full of granite slabs, other stones. They've been moving them out as they, um, use them up with the facility, they're, they're slowing it up. And what they are doing is, they are now taking over the entire other two areas. Um, the old Mother Thrift, they're beginning to move some of the slabs into that area. When they move their fabrication out, they're gonna move most of the other slabs. They'll have some interior, uh, devices to move them around. They may still be using the lift trucks they have right now, but they're trying to get rid of those and minimize those as well. So their future plans will be, um, the entire building will be a formal showroom in this area, and then they'll have other places they can take people to show the granite in the other, uh, roughly about sixty percent of the building. That being said, um, what we've done is taken the old plan we had that had all kinds of fencing and huge areas of outdoor storage, and sort of cut back what we're doing. Uh, we originally had in the front some upgrading of the parking for handicap accessibility. That's been undertaken. That part's done. Uh, there's no, they're gonna be a fence around the perimeter here. What they're looking to do really is to pull, uh, any of the gr- they might have a small area up against the building, no farther than ten feet from the edge of the building, to keep some outside, uh, pieces of granite. Uh, they are proposing to put in a dumpster that will be enclosed in this corner. They may in fact move it farther back, just 'cause this is a little bit difficult to get the trucks in, but they may move it farther back. Originally, there was one back over in this area here. They may move it, but it'll be totally enclosed. They are gonna maintain the drive aisle through here. They're gonna basically maintain the parking that's along this area at this point in time. And they'll have the overhead doors that will be maintained. That's really what they're looking to do at this point in time. Um, we're gonna preserve all the zoning setbacks we talked about way back when, residential from Van de Gra- uh, Van Norton, uh, Drive. Um, they're gonna be limiting the outside activity. They would like, in the front of the site here, sort of, um, there's a couple of granite slabs in a A-frame. Um, they would like to maintain, maintain those, but, um, they'd need a little bit of, I think, attention, maybe some landscaping or something like that. So what I've done, I've had some discussion with Kristen over the last, uh, few days. Um, the owner, Carol Gomes, apologizes when I spoke with her today. They're about, sounded like twelve, the voices of twelve kids in the background. It's school vacation week, and so she's not able to come tonight. But we did talk about, um, looking to get some feedback from the board as to what your concerns may still be at this point, then working with the staff between now and your next meeting to resolve these items, coming back with a little bit updated plan and trying to address to the extent we can your concerns and the issues that the board may have. So.
Thank you, Frank. Kristen?
Sure. Uh, we started this in twenty eighteen. So, uh, anyway, um, so it's a much scaled back proposal. Um, just, so, actually, can you hold, stay that? Can you open the PDF? Yep. So, um, this is the plan that Frank put together, but with my edits on it. Um, so I think that the ten, ten-foot along the building area for the, the slab area is fine. Um, I do want to understand a little bit more about, um, where the loading doors are, um, and then kind of how, right now, they have kind of those A-frame stands that they're putting the slabs on. I want to know a little bit more about how they're positioned, how many, just what are we talking about here, especially between the width of the doors? I'm not exactly sure what that is. Um, the concerns of the abutters were largely part of, um, the fabrication business, and I think we all kind of were a little bit frustrated with that type of business, so close to a residential neighborhood, um, and the outside washing of materials and all that stuff. So all of that is gone. Um, however, they still will be moving around less than they are now, but still moving around outside some forklifts of granite. And, um, in order to buffer some of that, um, we want to have the, a display of the times that they could be doing that. Um, as well as, they cleared from, if you look at the plan, um, right past it, between the parking spaces and Van Norton, a small area past the parking spaces, they kind of cleared and started putting granite in that area. I think that all should be re-vegetated, um, including, um, arborvitae or some evergreens. They, they are not, they, um, if you remember when they, before, it was like an eight-foot fence. I don't, you don't need an eight-foot fence. Um, and they don't, and they're not proposing a fence now. And I, I actually think vegetation is a better sound buffer than a fence. I mean, if you want to do a little bit of both, um, I do think there needs to be vegetation around wherever the dumpster area is. So Frank, if you're moving it to the back, I do want to add some vegetation around that area. Um, so I think that should, um, happen. Uh, and then if you look, uh, the front of the site, uh, in this front corner, um, right now, and I'll show it to you in a second after I go from this plan, but right now, there's, it's kind of, eh, the front of the site's the front of the site. It needs a little love. There's a lot, a little more dirt than actual green. Um, and there's kind of dirt, there's, they have granite slabs in this area right now. And then if you go to the corner, kind of right, you put your clicker in there, right there, it's just kind of this piece of curbing with like a U tree in it. It's, there's probably a tricycle in it if we show you the picture, but, um, it's, you know, it's, and then go here. Go back to street view. Um, so, one, um, I think, yeah, so stay there. So, um, one, I think we need to do some sort of sound buffering in the back. And in the front, it's outdoor display of merchand- uh, is this called a granite slab? Yeah, I guess so. So outdoor display of merchandise, yes, no, how are we gonna, if it's yes, it needs to not just be in like a dirt patch. Um, so we just, I want to work through it. And then just that corner where that sad little U bush is, like, is there something more we can do with that? Um, they did address the lighting issue with the broken, broken awning as you see here. Um, I guess we're gonna go back and forth with the building department that will resolve to get that. Uh, but their willingness and their, they certainly are actively trying to address that. So, um, and then we want to obviously, you know, re-stripe the whole parking lot and just, it just, it just needs to be cleaned up, um, quite a bit, and then buffer some of the sound and activity in the back. So, um, they, we don't expect a decision tonight. We just wanted to get some feedback since the plan, um, we haven't seen it for a long time, um, as well as the applicant is not able to be here this evening. So, um-
Okay.
That's where we are.
Thank you. Brenda, do you have any questions?
No, I just, to your point about the dumpster in the back, I, I would like to see vegetation and fencing.
Oh, the dumpster will be fenced itself.
That's a requirement.
Perfect. But even around that fencing, I want some vegetation.
That's all I have. Thank you. Joe?
Actually, I was, to that point, um, I think I had talked to Kristen earlier today on that, you know, between Van Norton and this, I, I would think vegetation and a fencing would also be appropriate. I think the fencing would be more of a, a visual barrier, and I think the vegetation would knock any kind of noise, because there's still, there's still gonna, I would assume, the fact that they're putting, uh, slabs here, they're still gonna be having a forklift there, I would imagine, right? At, on ti- at times, right?
Um, but what I don't know is, how would they get a slab from the outside into the building? They're talking about putting some kind of movement, um, cranes or something like that. It's not a crane for it, but some way to move the slab inside the building around without getting, but they still have to get something in my mind from whatever drops it off into the building itself.
Right, right.
And I'm not sure their operation, will they take some of the slabs, put them in a truck, bring them to their fabrication place from that, that location? Or will it be stored at the fabrication, uh, site? And they'll just have all the different types of granite stone they might have at this location?
From what we understand, though, it's the, the moving around is a lot less with one, less in the parking lot, and two, they're not fabricating, so they're not bringing it in, then bring it out, then bring the pieces out, then, I mean, it, it, yes, you'll still be moving granite around, but far less than the original proposal. But there'll still be the backing up of forklift.
Yeah. So I mean, that's, that's clearly, that's my thought on it. Uh, as well as I'd like to see more, um, landscaping out, out front as well, some trees and some things that would soften it up.
How do you feel about the, the granite in the, displayed in the front on that, in the grass there?
Is that gonna be a per- is that a permanent request? Is that-
That's what they're asking.
They would like to keep, um, some slab, grant, at least one out front to let people know that's what the place is. It's The Granite Place, so.
I mean, I, if they're gonna, I'll be honest with you, my thoughts aren't there. If, if they're gonna knock my socks off with landscaping and, and visual aesthetics, then if they want to keep a slab of granite out there, I would be fine with that. But I wouldn't, I would, I really would like to see that all cleaned up, and I'd like to see some trees planted, and I'd like the barrier in the back to, to be sufficient with fencing and vegetation. I mean, I, I think, to me, the, I mean, the, the problem comes in about the display of, I mean, does the display of granite, you know, is it tantamount to a sign? I mean, it's really, you know, it's, it's something that, you know, it's not, I mean, I'm, and I, and be honest with you, I, I mean, I internally am torn with those, because I, sandwich signs, I'm not against sandwich signs tastefully done in front of a building when they want to, you know, put the, their daily specials and things like that out there. So is this the same as that? Maybe. I mean, it's just, it's much larger scale, so it's a whole different, it really is a whole different, it's a whole s- set of problems that comes in when they start displaying this big of a, you know, of a, of an item out there. Um, I know, um, it's been denied to, uh, gas stations to be selling water outside and things like that. So I mean, that, that's probably more along those lines, and I, I'm not sure that we've, it's been allowed anywhere, really, uh, the outward, um, storing or displaying of any of the, of their, you know, their, uh, pro- yeah, products that they sell inside. So, but again, I, I'm internally torn on that. If somebody were to aesthetically make this place something that it isn't right now, and, and, and they said they wanted to debate, I, I would entertain that if that, if we even have the authority to entertain that, quite honestly, and that's really the question, you know?
Okay.
I think that goes to the point of where you say, what was there, if it relates to the, to the function, then it's a sign, right?
Right.
Yeah. We talked about that before.
Okay.
You could have authority to do that.
Right.
Thank you.
I'm glad Joe's troubled about that.
Troubled about a lot of things. Least of all, then.
No, really. My concern has just historically always been the neighbors first, and I think, you know, we have to approve what's going in, because they're right straight across from that. I mean, it's, and it's not a big wide street, and there is a little bit of a banking, but, uh, anything that happens on that site is immediately transmitted, whether it's starting up a diesel truck or, or whatever it is. So I would, I would not hesitate regarding the expense that they will not want to do, requiring, uh, a, a, a green barrier there with the fence, and only acceptable with our approval. I mean, I, I would really pitch, same thing in back. I don't like the dumpster in back at all, because you know what's happened, even down like, uh, uh, on, on, off Millsick Street, like the people up on Miller Road, you know, they're saying, oh, no, they're not gonna, but five o'clock in the morning, there's some, some dumpster guy out there, you know, doing the dumpsters, and that's not fair to the neighbors. So I don't know whether we, how we can address that. And I would, I would, e, I would not be opposed to having the dumpster at some place that was more visible if it helped having it backed right up to that house.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Frank, I, I have, um, an issue with the, the slab display out front. I go by that twice a week, twice a day going to work. Are they gonna be rotating different types of slabs out there? Or what's the real, I mean, they have a sign that says The Granite Place. What, what's the real, I mean?
Um, since I've been involved, which is probably last spring, um, they haven't changed that granite, those granite slabs out there. I will certainly ask that question and see what that might be. Um, again, I think it's just sort of a, um, demonstration of the, the product. Oh, it's the place that has the granite slabs out front, or something like that, is I think what they're-
Okay.
That's called a sign.
Yeah, you have a sign that, that kind of says that. And I think if they want to do that, they'd, maybe the next meeting, you'd have to come back with a plan that really makes it look nice. I mean, right now, they just look random, standing, standing there like an A-frame. It looks like, almost like a demilitarized zone with those things there. So like, you'd have to like, really dress it up for, for, for us, for me, anyway, to, to be on board with it. But since we're cleaning the site up anyway, I don't know why, and you have that big sign, I don't know why you'd need it. But just, just my, if you come back with maybe a plan, or what it would look like, or how you'd clean it up, or how you'd make it look nicer than, rather than just A-frame out there.
Okay. Thank you. Phil?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a couple of things. So-
So, I've been looking at this for a while, as you guys did. And I had a lot of pictures from it, from the before and after. And I can be honest with you, being there today and taking some more pictures, the, the after's not as different as, as the before. Went there, we talked about how the, the granite had creeped past the curb into the, into the, into the, the natural vegetation there. And I said, okay, now we pulled it back. If you go there today, it's going back over, it's creeping back over the curb again. So, I got to be honest with you, I'm not confident that with this, this ten-foot strip of where they're going to keep, you know, outside granite, that that doesn't, it's going to continue the noise for the neighbors, which I think is the intent of this thing, as being kind of a, an accessory use of it, that that won't necessarily creep as well. So, I'm actually not in favor of that ten-foot strip keeping anything outside with regard to the granite slabs. And that would include the two out front. When I go by there, and I go by there a lot, like my, my, my next door neighbor here, I think of safety issue. I see they're, they're on the A-frame, they're strapped in, but they're just, they're just out there. As with, all the slabs were, that there was no, there's not, no security that the slabs were in back for, for any of the kids that would be playing around there. So, I, yeah, I wouldn't be in favor at all of, of that with those big slabs out there. With the dumpster, I would agree with Member Raymond, that that should not be in the back, that's got to be up. I had a thought on that when you're talking about it, that the dumpster actually should go on the other side of the building, away from the neighbors. So, you've got that neighbor in the back that, that came before us. So, I think you're thinking of putting it in the right-hand corner.
Near the bug place.
Right, if you put it over to the left-hand corner, where, and nobody's talked about this since the last time I mentioned it, you've got that shipping container with the plow on top of it. So, I don't know how that's approved, why the shipping container is still there, what's in it, are they going to get rid of it? You know, what, and then maybe that's the right place for the dumpster, right? It's, it's on the, it'd be on the upper left-hand side. What's that?
Back left corner?
Back left corner, yeah.
Okay. Is that still closer to the houses, though?
It's right, right, where your finger is, is that dumpster, right there, yeah. So, the guy... Not, no, it's, it's actually, I don't think there's another house back there. I think it's...
Houses on the right side.
There's a street.
Right-hand side. Okay, yeah, 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 okay. Yeah, so...
You're getting to Bill Ricker at some point over here.
Yeah, so, what you've got is, you've got the shipping container. Frank, can you tell me about that shipping container with the dumpster on top? What's, what's in it and why is it there? And what's, what's the status of that going to be?
I don't know, but I can certainly find out what that is.
That'll be the, the second time, I think the first time we met, I asked about that. And I don't think the building inspector noted that, but...
The dumpster in Bill Ricker, maybe?
Uh, that would be great.
And the plow. We could use the plow actually.
As a resident of Bill Ricker, I might have jetted him.
Right.
Well, they got plenty of them.
But as, as I'll say again, it's not on the plan and it can't stay. I mean, unless it's shown on the plan, so, well, so we need an update on when it's going.
Yeah, okay.
And the other one, I had a question, because I, I'm not sure, I'm getting the big picture of what's going on here. So, if you go two doors down to that office building-ish with the gambrel roof on it?
Here?
No.
Uh, no, uh, no, down one more.
Over here.
The housy, gambrel-looking thing?
Yes.
That's got a sign in it that says Granite Place. What's going on there?
The Granite Place has bought that piece of property-
Okay.
-and they're parking cars here. Their, their staff, so they park, they park the staff over here.
What are they doing with the building?
Uh, right now, it's empty, but stay tuned, something may be coming on that.
So...
Not related to the Granite Place, just to, you know...
Well, there's a, there's a Granite Place sign in the window. So, I, I'm, I am assuming it has something to do with the Granite Place.
Right. The owners of the Granite Place, right now, they do not own this, their lot, their tenant. We're going to take a whole look. They did buy this lot, it's a very weird lot. It essentially runs right on the edge of what used to be Lester's parking. And there's a wall, it's a little tiny, sort of trapezoid-shaped lot that's paved from one end to the other, basically. And there's, there's a slope down here, there's a retaining wall here. This building's right on the edge of the roadway. And they have someone that, that is looking to move in there, a tenant for that building.
So, help me out again, why is there a sign that says Granite Place on that building?
Oh, just because they own it, they own that building and they park, they have staff parks there.
But they don't need a sign.
There's nothing, yeah, there's nothing inside there.
They don't need a sign, can they take the sign out of that building, then?
I'll, I'll ask them.
And so...
Don't put a slab of granite.
So, like, two weeks ago, I saw somebody that was moving something in and out of that building. So, is there any storage of granite or tools or something while they're waiting for Wilmington to do that? So, is there something going on in that building until the time that Wilmington gets up and running?
Not that I'm, I'll find, not that I'm aware of. I've been out looking at that site, I didn't see anybody in the building. A couple of times I've been out there, but it's only been a couple of times. There are probably ten to twelve park, uh, probably eight parking spaces that they use. And there's a couple of other parking spaces for the other buildings, a little bit farther to the north that they park in that lot.
Uh, actually, my dentist is in the next one down. They don't, they don't use that, they specified that they don't use that one for parking. I know that was before us before and they mentioned that. But, yeah, I don't know if the building inspector can go in there and check out what's going in there? Because there's something going on in there right now that I saw two weeks ago, so. Maybe they can check that out, there might be, some, something's going on. But yeah, if they wouldn't mind taking that sign out, because that refers to me that there's something being associated with the two. And then, we'd have to take that into consideration with the whole thing.
Yep.
Big picture for me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Bell. Randy?
Just a, a couple of things. The landscaping out front, I guess, could somehow or another incorporate maybe a slab of granite buried in the ground, sticking up two feet or something, you know, like, like you do with a, uh, boulders or whatever.
A sign.
Yeah, something like that.
A grain reel, yeah.
That might be more acceptable and still show that there was granite there. My, my other big, big question is, is there a way, and this is the staff and the applicant and us, is the reason this all came about really was because the neighbors were being adversely affected by a business that was in a correct zone but was doing, was doing more than they should be at the location. So, at the meeting, not at the meeting that we intend to make a decision on this, but maybe the one before it, can we get the neighbors back or at least get them notified that something is still going on? Because, you know, these things tend to fall off the...
Yeah.
You know, you know what I'm saying? I'm, I'm sure that we have a list, Jen, maybe, as far as I, um, do we have a list of the Granite Place neighbors, maybe?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe if we could get them notified as we get closer to making a decision?
When they're actually, when coming, yes.
Definitely, I've been trying to keep them informed.
Okay, great.
It's not worth having them here if we just keep continuing it. But if we're going to do something substantial, we probably would like their input. Thank you, Madam Wilson.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just make one other comment, please?
Yeah.
Right at the back is, is a driveway. That was why I was concerned with the dumpster. There's kind of a banking, but I mean, there's a driveway in the house, so. And if you'd tell me what a trapezoid is.
Oh, sure. So, it's magic, you got it, okay.
Education week, you don't have to...
All right.
I thought that had to do with the circus.
My turn. Okay, um, I agree with most of what my fellow board members have said. I want to just repeat, we're going to replace all of the vegetation that they ripped out and put a fence in on the right. We talked earlier today that there have to be signs with the activity hours listed so that everyone knows when they are and are not allowed to have trucks moving around and about. I do not like the idea of having the storage of the granite in front. I think it's a sign. And, and it's also a huge, huge thing. It's, it, they're enormous and hulking. And if somebody drives off the road into one of those things, that's not good. So, I would prefer to just see that piece of property spruced up with some nice grass and flowers and make it look pretty. It would improve the look of the business tremendously. As well as the little area on the right that Kristin mentioned that also could be improved. As for the outdoor storage, I also share the concern that Bell expressed about excess noise. I would want to know more about how that would be used, how many of those A-frames would be there? Where would they be placed? And would they be just placed there and stay there? Or would there be constant activity moving them in and out of the building? I'd want to know that. I also would prefer that you don't move the dumpster to the back right side, as the other board members have said. You could explore Bill's idea of moving it to the left or you could keep it where it is. I don't think we want to move it as close as possible to the nearest neighbor. That's not a good idea. So, those are my questions. And I think you probably have a lot to go back and talk to your client about.
It'll probably be next week, when great kids are back in school, I think.
Okay.
That would be fine.
Thank you. So, do you have any questions for us?
No, I think, um, what I might suggest is, I'll talk with the client. We might check in with the staff to sort of make sure that my interpretation is correct. And that if we have some ideas, are these, at least the first blush, would be something that wouldn't get us kicked out of here immediately, but give us 10 minutes before you kick us out. But something like that, just to sort of try to make sure that when we get back together, it can be productive meeting-
Yes.
-and move ahead.
And if you could find out what is happening at that building that they've purchased? Because apparently, Member Gaffney has seen activity there. We'd like to know what's happening there. Maybe they're just rehabbing it for their new tenant, which is fine, but we...
It may be, the new tenants are going to be involved in doing the fit-up. I don't know if this is the case.
Okay.
And so, it could have been people, it could have been in there measuring things up and looking things. One of the items I'll share with you is that the building is not handicap accessible. And to get to that first floor, it's, you can't get it from the front, because there's no room between Cambridge Street and that. It's going to be a, to use it, the standard ramps is going to be pretty extensive. It's about a four-foot vertical grade from the back to get up to that level. So, that's one thing that we're certainly looking at. But I'll certainly ask the question, is what's going on?
Okay.
And maybe I'll get a tour and see what's in there.
Okay.
I'll do that.
Thanks so much. All right, I think we're ready to continue this. If I may have a motion?
Motion to adjourn the planning board meeting on March 5th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seven zero. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you both very much.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda are the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes that Liz sent around?
Yes.
Great. Anybody have any comments or changes they want to make that they haven't already informed staff of?
I cannot vote on the minute D.
Okay, so we should take them individually?
At least that one separately.
Okay, why don't we just vote on the first three then together? Does that sound good? So, I'm looking for a motion to accept the minutes of October 16th, 2019, 11, November 7th, 2019, and November 21st, 2019.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Okay, so it's six zero one, and then we'll take...
Make a motion to approve the minutes from December 5th, 2019?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining?
Abstaining.
So, then that one's five zero two. Thank you. Discussion items, we have been asked to appoint a member from this board to the solar committee, which is being run by Monty Pearson. And I think that, I hope everyone has seen, that basically, the committee is, the solar advisory committee is going to be evaluating a proposed amendment to the general bylaw that would mandate that for new construction and major renovations, larger businesses and major town government buildings would be required to place solar panels on their roofs. So, that's what this committee will be exploring. And I was saying, I heard that you would be willing to take it on. Thank you, Brenda. Right, we have our member. I know Monty was anxious to get started, so I appreciate you doing that. Thank you. The other thing I wanted to just quickly mention, I've been speaking with staff about the master plan and how we, you know, we're probably about 95% done. We just kind of want to finish it up. So, I think what makes sense perhaps, Kristin, is to have staff circulate the latest and greatest to everybody on the board, ask everybody to give it a fresh look, fresh set of eyes, so that we can finally complete it and get it signed off on. So, I'd like to try and get that done, I don't know, by April or May? Does that seem reasonable?
Yes.
Amen.
Okay.
Yes, if you lock me in a room for a week, I can probably get it done.
Okay.
We can do that.
I just need to not be interrupted.
Well, I know you've been short-staffed, and so that's...
So, Brady starts next week. I know it's been too long. And then, all these really other exciting things happen, and then we're really busy. And then, but we have had tremendous amount of comments. It's just really just...
I understand.
Everything together.
Getting it together. And then, I do need readers. I definitely would like to circulate it again. And then, have some of you who really want to really, who love editing, all that stuff, kind of get into, just, just readers to try to just form it all up to make sure we're all set. And then, kind of put it in the hands to some of our other staff who know how to format things exactly perfectly. And I have missed Liz a lot this week on silly things about formatting, that she is just a goddess of formatting, so. And then, just getting it done. And, yeah, I, it's, yes.
Well, let's set it as a goal to have it done by the beginning of May. And we'll all just, you know, reach out to us and tell us what we can do to help. Because we can pitch in and do our part. We want to get it done. Okay, Member Raymond had something he wanted to discuss?
Just, I want to say, I have questions about the constitution of the committee. Because the beginning, I was tossed off the committee illegally.
Which committee?
I did, excuse me.
The master plan.
I didn't know which committee you were talking about, sorry.
Uh, I'm talking about the master plan. And so, I asked Town Council about it, she said, yeah, no, they can't do that. But they did it, at any rate. So, I just want to reserve my ability to comment or whatever on it. Because I consider it not legal.
You definitely can, you definitely can comment because it comes to this board. It's this board that has to approve it and move it forward. So, you definitely have full power to comment and make suggestions and changes as you would like.
Thank you.
I mean, at this point, it's here.
Say what?
At this point, it's, it's here.
It's the planning board's responsibility now.
It's ours right now, so you're, you're front and center engaged right now.
I understand your frustration, Ball, and I sympathize.
Well, it's not frustration, it's just illegal. Because I said to Town Council-
Well, I think it is frustrating, though, that's frustrating.
I said, uh, to Town Council, can they do that? She said, no. But I said, well, they did it, so.
So, yes, you definitely have full power to review and edit at this stage, as we all do. Did anyone have any other items they wanted to bring forward? No, all right. We're going to, we're meeting my goal of getting over.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, seven zero. Good night, everyone.